Just a reminder that in two weeks, we will have response to all comments that were made. At this time, we have the response to last meeting's comments and Dr. Abrego will present those.
Thank you, Mr. Rola. Addressing the Board, I want to say that the most important thing that all Board members must understand is that all individuals have a right to express their opinion. However, when individuals are addressing the Board, they may or may not be giving you correct or factual information. I will respond to the concerns from the last Board meeting. The first concern is that math classes are overcrowded at Adam City High School and have 75 students in the classes. The evidence from the high school rosters indicate 20 to 25 students per section. I did confirm that there is a math class of approximately 60 students, but this was at the request of three teachers. They each had 20 students and asked the principal if they could combine their classes. So yes, that is a large class, but remember that there are three instructors. Three instructors, and they did this to provide reteach and differentiate instruction to meet the needs of individual students. This was during the reteach block. Therefore, the parent complaint at the last meeting is not supported by the facts. The second concern of the parent was that the principal was not aware that the parent conferences had been canceled. I personally spoke with the principal, and she was fully aware of this transition from the traditional parent-teacher conferences to an ongoing parent engagement process, and she also confirmed sharing this information with the staff. To better communicate this to the parents, there is a video being created by the ESA staff to explain the new process to our community. The video will explain the parent-teacher conferences did not go away, but the new format requires ongoing communication with our parents throughout the school year. Teachers make phone calls to parents and visit homes. They also keep parents informed electronically as to their child's attendance, behavior, homework assignments, grades, and progress toward graduation and success in the classroom. We have to remember that the district was in turnaround last year and now is in prior improvement, and therefore, the district must seek new strategies to reach a performance rating. There was also a concern that the Board is having secret meetings, and that is once again an opinion not based on facts. Board meetings are scheduled twice per month, and the agenda must be posted 24 hours in advance. At times, the Board may schedule special meetings, but once again, law requires an agenda must and has been posted 24 hours in advance. There was also a concern pertaining to the superintendent's contract by a few individuals. The decision on superintendent's contract is ultimately up to the Board of Education based on their goals and expectation of the superintendent. I just wanted to inform the Board qualities I bring to Adams 14. As your superintendent, I have 10 years of experience as a successful superintendent in challenging districts. I have a proven record of elevating districts from underperforming to performing. I model a strong work ethic by being at work each and every day, and I am always on time. I have perfect attendance this year, and though my workdays do not start until 8 o'clock, I am at work by 7:15. I also take pride in dressing as a professional each and every day. I constantly stress high expectations for our students and staff and was disappointed by the fact that our students at Adam City High School had a better attendance rate than our staff this past Wednesday. Please remember that one of our key components in the district turnaround plan that was presented to the State Board of Education was to improve the overall attendance in our district, and we only have one year to do that. I stress collaboration between administration and union and making decisions in the best interest of our students. And I want to say, we will not improve our district until we all understand our roles and responsibilities and make the success of our students our number-one priority. I am pleased to inform the governing Board that as of 3:30 today, Ms. Molinado, the principal of Adam City High School, extended an offer of collaboration and problem-solving to the union leadership so that they may address concerns at the high school. I encourage them to please continue to work together to improve Adam City High School and remember again that we only have one year to improve according to the State Board, and we have to go back in one year and present what we have accomplished. Another concern that was brought up at the last Board meeting was that the superintendent's bullying individuals and has his own personal agenda. The governing Board has given me goals to improve all of our schools and elevate the district to a performance level. Therefore, I do have a personal agenda of high expectation for all district employees and will hold all stakeholders accountable for the success of Adams 14 District. The last concern was a teacher's concern that the principal made a remark about her leadership to the students. Our policy clearly states that all problems should be resolved at the lowest possible level. Therefore, a concern with the principal should be addressed with the principal. Thank you.
Moving on. At this time, we would like to recognize, and he couldn't make it tonight, but we would like to recognize Mr. Joe Drylin, who will be outgoing tonight, would have been his last meeting, so do you want to have some?
Well, again, we did have some nice awards for him. I'm sorry, he's not here today, but as you know, he filled in for our district. He did a very nice job. We were really appreciative of the fact that he was able to help us during those difficult times, so even though he's not here to receive the awards and the recognition in person, we will make sure, Mr. Rola, that we give it to him personally.
Okay, good. Okay, moving on to routine items. Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the acceptance of the personal action at this time.
Motion to accept personnel items.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please.
Aye.
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 We'll hold off a minute. If you have to leave, please do so. Okay, moving on to business at this time. Other, 1.1 Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with Adams County Head Start to provide preschool programming for students in Adams 14.
Motion to approve Superintendent's recommendation to contract for Adams County Head Start.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, please.
Mr. R. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 1.2 Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado to attend the state Special Ed Courage to Risk Conference.
Motion to approve the in-state travel to Colorado Springs.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. There's no dates on this Superintendent's recommendation to the Board of Education.
I think I have Mr. Robert Frantam. Is that, how soon will that take place?
It's in January. I apologize for that.
So?
Last Friday and Saturday in January.
And Student Services is your department?
Yeah.
Because that's not in here either.
Special Education is the subdivision under the Department of Student Services, yeah.
Board President, I think we have to amend this to put the dates on here.
Thank you, 19th and 20th of January.
What was that again?
19th and 20th of January, yeah.
And thank you so much, Mr. Harvest, for bringing that to our attention because it is important that we have the date.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Thomas to amend this, 1.2, to include the dates, which would be January 19th and January 20th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, is there a discussion? Can we have a roll call on this, Monica?
Mr. R. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to 1.3 Superintendent's recommendation.
We got a vote on the original.
I thought we just did. All right, going on back to 1.2, the approval of an in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado to attend the state Special Ed Courage to Risk Conference on January 19th and 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 1.3 Superintendent's recommendation, a motion for the approval of the in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado by Adam City Middle School Counselor.
Motion to approve the in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs by an Adam City Middle School Counselor.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please. Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.4 Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval for an additional expense with Vail Unified School District.
Motion to approve the additional expense with Vail Unified School District.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. R. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 1.5 Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado by the Human Resource Director to attend Colorado Association of School Boards Schools Attorney Conference at the 2017 Convention.
Motion to approve the in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs by the Human Resources Director.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. R. Truitt?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 1.6 Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of in-state travel to Salt Lake City, Utah for the world-class risk management training.
Motion to approve the out-of-state travel to Salt Lake City, Utah for the world-class risk management training.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.0 Board Organizational Meeting, starting with the Record of Election Votes. Do you have that, Monica?
The final official result for the 2017 coordinated election to Adams 14 Board of Education is as follows. Candidate Connie Quintana with 1,207 votes, Joseph Driving with 909 votes, Brian Joseph Reichel with 684 votes, Bill Hyde with 1,355 votes, for a total vote of 4,155.
Okay, thank you, Monica. At this time, we would like to give Mr. Bill the oath of office, so can you come up, sir? No, Monica. And this time, Monica, will you please give the oath of office? You could probably stand right up there in front of the podium. No, on this side, Mr. Hyatt, and Monica will give it to you.
Get on outside.
Stand up.
Thanks.
Raise your right hand. That's why I put it down here.
All right.
Repeat after me. I, Bill Hyde?
I, Bill Hyde.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties?
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties?
Of the office of school director as required by law?
Of the office of school director as required by law?
And will support the Constitution of the United States?
And will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
And the laws made pursuant thereto?
And the laws made pursuant thereto.
One is your copy, and this is our copy. Thank you. That is yours. You can now take your seat. Whose name? Where? Do you want to hold on to that? Raise your right hand? I'll hold it for you if you want. I, Connie Quintana?
I, Connie Quintana?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully perform the duties?
That I will faithfully perform the duties?
Of the office of school director as required by law?
As the office of the school director as required by law?
And will support the Constitution of the United States?
And will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
And the laws made pursuant thereto?
And the laws made pursuant thereto?
And then sign one more copy. That is your copy?
Congratulations. Congratulations, Connie. Okay, at this time, we would like to go on to the election of the Board of Education Officers.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, please. Could I make a statement regarding my appointment? Thank you. I send out a big thank you to all who supported my candidacy and helped this day come to fruition. You are the reason I am here. I am humbled by your trust in me. Having never run for public office before, I am honored in the confidence and conviction that you have placed in me with your votes and efforts. Anyone who knows me knows that I do not take commitment lightly. I say here tonight, I intend to uphold the pledges I made to my supporters and to the over 3,500 voters my wife and I contacted on the campaign trail between last February, when my candidacy was in its infancy and literally no one in Adams 14 knew I existed, through Election Day, when I received a plurality of the votes. Pretty much everyone knows that our district is in jeopardy of losing its state accreditation, having been in or near turnaround status for too many years. Voters easily summed up the major impediments facing Adams 14 and the respective responsibilities of the school board and the administration. Yes, the kids come first, but what exactly, they pondered, is the starting point? Their answers coalesced easily into big change in the areas of communication, transparency, and accountability between the school board and the community, the school board and the administration, and the administration and the community. I could not agree more. Working to restore and improve the Big Three, as I call them, communication, transparency, and accountability, was and is my pledge to my supporters and the voters. Without addressing the Big Three first, significant changes in how the district meets its obligations for accreditation cannot possibly result in the substantial progress needed in the classrooms. Without addressing the Big Three first, there cannot possibly be the construction of resilient, comprehensive, strategic plan so desperately needed for Adams 14 to secure accreditation for now and for the future. The kids, the teachers, the administration, the Board, and the community, everyone, has to do their part in order to recreate a cohesive, accredited entity that is Adams 14. That is the first step, an ardent one at that, but a mandatory one if Adams 14 is to survive in the upcoming one to three years, and then to do better than survive in the next five to 20 years. Although it'd be a much easier way out, I will not feel it a triumph if charter schools swoop in and take over the district, nor if our schools have to be auctioned off. I am here to say I believe Adams 14 can be better, and I am here to promote more vigorously than in the past the Big Three. I do not apologize for bringing these district concerns to light in this forum. It is exactly this forum that must face these challenges, and it's what the district voters, the Adams 14 staff, and the families in the district are already talking about. I know, I've talked with them, I've heard them. Will it take time? Yes. Will it take energy? Yes. Will it take good ideas? Yes. Will it take collaboration? Yes. Will it take the combined efforts of everybody in Adams 14? Absolutely. And above all, it will take honesty and trust. I am ready to work with the Board and the administration to improve each of the Big Three. Furthermore, I am ready to work for the fiscally prudent voters, who do not want their real estate values to go down because we do not have an accredited school district. And I am ready to work for the taxpayers, who no longer want to see their taxes going towards buying out contracts of ill-hired or ill-fired district employees or for district scandals. I take to heart Dr. Abrego's words, "Believe in better." I do believe that we can do much better. In fact, I imagine a rephrasing of the superintendent's motivational inspirational slogan into an action, into an imperative, an ultimatum. Better or bust? Thank you.
I do want to thank the voters. I've been here a long time, and my parents and my students know me, and I do want to thank those who voted me in because my, I don't know how I would say it, but my ultimate is the kids are first. They must learn, and they all learn at their own rate. But we, as an administration, we need to key in on what that is and make sure that they do learn and that we don't lose out to turnaround. And I think if we keep that first, the children are first, not the administration, not the teachers, it's the children. We have to put them on the forefront. Not what I like, not what you like, but what do the children need? And that's my purpose for being here, and I want to thank everyone who voted for me.
At this time, can we have? At this time, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. R. Truitt?
Here.
Dr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Kimbana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Here.
Okay, moving on to the elections of the Board Education Officers. First one will be the election of the Board President.
I would like to nominate Dave Rola.
No second?
Guess not.
Doesn't take a second. It doesn't? Okay, is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate myself.
Okay, there's two, Dr. Hyatt and myself.
I'd like to nominate Timmy O.
Okay, Timmy O. Anybody else? Okay, I guess put it to a vote. I don't know, do you want to do it secretly, or just hands up, or?
Mr. Chairman, could I, a point of information, could the Board members have an opportunity to offer comments on behalf of the nominees?
That's fine. We'll start with you, Harvest, since you're right at the end there, we just worked out.
But, um, Timmy O?
Yeah.
I feel Timmy O, in the past couple of years, has demonstrated great qualities to be the next Board member. He's have shown leadership and understanding and been perfect for this district in the past two years, and I feel he'd make a great president for Adams 14.
Thank you, Harvest. Connie?
And I recommend Dave Rola because, you know, he's been here, he's on his second term, and he's run this kind of stuff before, even in school, when he was a teacher, so he knows the process, he knows the policies. You can always count on him.
Okay, Dr. Hyatt?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I am not well-known by any of you on the Board. My wife, on the campaign trail, as a quick introduction, would say, "Hi, my husband is Bill Hyde. He's a Vietnam vet with a Purple Heart and a PhD in the economics of education." I would like to supply a few more details about myself. I have broad experience for the job. I represent a fresh, new perspective. I am willing to work to fulfill the duties of President, and I want Adams 14 to have an open reassessment of the alignment between existing educational programs and the needs of its students. Through my graduate work and my first post-doc job, I researched how other countries, including the United States, use their educational systems to promote societal goals. In terms of teaching, I have taught many subjects and grade levels, economics, math, science, and literacy, in college, high school, middle school, grade school, and even preschool. My wife and I founded and taught at a Montessori preschool, which at the time was ranked the number-one preschool in the state. I have taught overseas in Venezuela and Colombia for three years and in public and private schools in the United States. I have worked with highly gifted students and academically and economically disadvantaged students. When I tell people that I've taught for three years in South When I tell people that I've taught for three years in South America, they immediately think I must be bilingual. I certainly wish that were the case, but I'm not. I am extremely dyslexic. I was one of the first children in the United States to be diagnosed with severe dyslexia. I entered fifth grade not knowing how to write a word, not knowing how to read a word, and barely able to speak. With the help of some wonderful people along the way, I have fought a lifelong war to compensate for my learning deficits. I hid my dyslexia from the world as best I could, but two decades ago, I saw that it had a silver lining. I realized how different individual learning styles are. I am particularly sympathetic towards students with learning difficulties. These experiences do not give me answers, but they do give me a rich and broad context for addressing the issues we face. A second point I would like to make is that I offer a fresh face on the board, and I have a clear mandate from the voters to strive for big, new pathways. When I knocked on doors, I repeatedly heard them say, "We need change." Despite the efforts of the best elected official, every decision-maker will make decisions that are not popular with some people. Any public servant who serves for an extended period of time acquires unavoidably baggage which at some point can become counterproductive. I think a change in leadership would be advantageous. To use a sports metaphor, as the new member of the team, I am ready to have you pass me the baton. It is the times we live in that have brought me to where I am. If these were ordinary times, I would not be here before you today. At my age, I am not looking for a job or a title. I am not embarking upon a political career. I am thinking globally and acting locally. I want to give our children the opportunities we owe them. As I said in my opening remarks, the starting place is advancing greater accountability and transparency in everything we do. We need to review goals and results on a frequent, regular basis in an open forum. An unspoken given is that accountability and transparency require good communication in all directions. As a board, we need to articulate clear policies and guidelines so that our expectations for Adams fourteen are clear and measurable. We need improved relations with our community, and that starts with timely and frank communication regarding not just our successes, but also our challenges. When we accomplish these things, we gain greater trust, which in turn opens the door to further successes. It is imperative that the community support our schools to make the improvements we want, but the school system will not have support if the community feels that it is being ignored. I do believe in better. We have change, we can change what we want to change, but to get to where we should be will take all parties working together. In summary, I have briefly explained why I seek your vote for president of the board. I have relevant education experience, I am a fresh face with a fresh perspective, I will give my responsibilities as president top priority, and I will encourage all of us to think broadly and creatively about where we want to go and how best to get there. If elected, I promise to work cooperatively with all parties. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I guess we'll vote, and we'll do a, uh, just write the person you want on a piece of paper, fold it, send it to our left, and we'll have Monica count it. You all have a tablet, I believe, there.
I'll give you some.
President Rola?
Yeah.
If it's by seat, by ballot, I need to have one other person.
A judge. You need to have a judge.
Somebody else's, I'm counting two.
She needs to have somebody else sign, so you have to judge.
Oh, who?
Can't they hurry to it?
Just over the outside? Yeah, you can appoint.
Thank you.
Anybody. Dr. Patterson, will you please be the judge?
President Rola?
Yes.
We have three votes for Timmy O Archuleta, one vote for Mr. Rola, and one vote for Dr. Hyde.
Okay, Timmy O, so cheers. Thank you.
You don't have to accept it if you don't want to. Congrats.
Now you got to vote to the vice president. First of all, I want to thank the confidence of the board in me. I don't do this work for personal gain. I do this work for the students out there, the teachers and the community members. It's an honor to sit on the board, as a member of the board, and to be elected to this position, which is, comes as a big surprise to me, as it may to many of you. But I do accept it, and I will honor my responsibilities, and I will do the job, best job that I possibly can for the students, especially the ones that are here tonight. Thank you for being here, and to the ones that'll be here in the future, and all the students that are here now and in the future also. So I do accept this honorably, and a vote of confidence from the board is an honor to me personally, and I thank you very much for that. Now we'll continue on with business. The question on the election is for nomination of vice president. Are there any nominations for the position of vice president?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Connie.
Are there any further nominations for the office of vice president? Are there any further nominations for the office of vice president? Nominations for the office of vice president will now close. Congratulations, Connie.
Thank you. I don't know if I won that, or I was, nobody voted on it, but that's okay. I was a vice president last time, and I do respect it and I do cherish it. And again, my main goal here is what's good for our children. Thank you very much.
Nominations are now in order for the office of secretary. Are there any nominations for the office of secretary?
I would like to nominate Harvest.
Are there any further nominations for the office of secretary?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Dr. Hyde.
Are there any further nominations for the office of secretary? Seeing no further nominations, the nominations are now closed. We'll vote. Same process.
President Archuleta?
Yes.
Um, for the nomination of secretary and treasurer, um, those are only by roll call.
Those are by appointment?
By roll call.
By roll call, okay. Thank you.
No, but, uh, also, those, okay.
The question on the election is nominee for secretary. As many are in favor of nominee, pardon me? We will now cast a vote for, is it in alphabetical order? Monica?
Yes.
So, Dr. Hyde for secretary?
It has to be, it has to be in the order they were nominated. So we would, you would request a vote for Mr. Thomas first?
Okay.
And do roll call for him first?
Okay, so I request a vote for office of secretary for Mr. Harvest Thomas?
Would you like roll call?
Yes, can I please have roll call?
Mr. Archuleta?
Nay.
Dr. Hyde?
Yes.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yay.
I want to be the treasurer.
Congratulations, Mr. Thomas.
No, no, hold, hold. We still, still can vote. That's only four.
Oh.
We can, Mr. Hyde.
No, Dr. Hyde voted.
Yeah, but he's next, Mr..
Oh, yeah.
I got one nay.
Did you vote?
So we got to vote five, so.
You got the majority, you got three.
But we go in order.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we're gonna do.
Now we gonna vote for Dr. Hyde.
So I'd like to cast a vote for Dr. Hyde for office of secretary. Can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
No.
Mr. Rola?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yay.
Nominations are, congratulations, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Nominations are now in order for the office of treasurer. Are there any nominations for the office of treasurer?
Dr. Hyde.
Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Are there any other nominations for the office of treasurer? Nominations are now closed. Congratulations, Dr. Hyde.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to, I'd like to have a motion to accept Monica Avina as assistant secretary and Eddie Stortz as assistant treasurer to the board. Can I have a nomination, please? Second, don't you? I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second. Are there any, is there any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Yay.
Okay, now we need the board members to sign their confidentiality affidavits, confidentiality affidavits.
Okay, instructus.
Pernod, please.
Boy, you're pernod, Miss Q. That's Monica, I think. Oh, boy signed it before she saw me.
She saw you.
I almost signed it again. Yeah, you're gonna be good at taking notes.
So now we need to do board member school, board members' schools and committee assignments. Yes.
I provided, um, in highlight, um, those that are available if you're only filling, um, the vacancy.
We're only filling those vacancies?
If you would like, or you could.
Well, what's the consensus of the board? Are you happy with the schools you have? Dr. Hyde is new, is there something that you would like, Dr. Hyde?
Oh, well, I, uh, there are some of the schools in which I'm more familiar with than others, but I don't mean to bump anybody out of an existing position. It appears to me that, uh, Joe Dryling, uh, in the past handled Sandville and DuPont. Uh, and I don't know whether there are any other assignments or people who would like to relinquish any of their current, uh, schools that have been assigned to them. I'm open to, uh, horse trading, so to speak. I'd be happy to pick up an additional school or two if, if, uh, the members of the board wanted to reshuffle the deck, so to speak.
What, what schools are you comfortable with as of today?
Well, uh, in the, there, there's, uh, three that I can think of right away. It's Kearney, Rose Hill, and Lester Arnold.
Okay, two out, the three I had, if you want to do that, I don't have a problem.
So let's see, you're with Lester Arnold?
And Rose Hill.
Rose Hill?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to pick up those two.
All right.
That's Monica, I think. Oh, boy signed it before she saw me.
She saw you.
I almost signed it again. Yeah, you're gonna be good at taking notes.
So now we need to do Board Member School, Board Members Schools and Committee Assignments. Yes?
I would like to keep my, the ones I have. Kearney and...
President Archuleta?
Yes.
I provided, in highlight, those that are available if you're only filling the vacancy.
You're only filling those vacancies?
If you would like, or you could change it up.
Well, what's the consensus of the Board? Are you happy with the schools you have? Dr. Hyde is new? Is there something that you would like, Dr. Hyde?
Oh, well, I, there are some of the schools in which I'm more familiar with than others, but I don't mean to bump anybody out of an existing position. It appears to me that Joe Dryling, in the past, handled Sandville and Dupont. And I don't know whether there are any other assignments or people who would like to relinquish any of their current schools that have been assigned to them. I'm open to horse trading, so to speak. I'd be happy to pick up an additional school or two if, if the members of the Board wanted to reshuffle the deck, so to speak.
What, what schools are you comfortable with as of today?
Well, in the, there, there's three that I can think of right away. It's Kearney, Rose Hill and Lester Arnold.
Okay. Two out, the three I had, if you want to do that, I don't have a problem.
So let's see, you're with Lester Arnold?
And Rose Hill.
Rose Hill?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to pick up those two.
All right. And I'll take the, the two that Mr. Dryling had.
So, Dr. Hyde, you will be assigned to Rose Hill?
I did not hear you.
You will be assigned to Rose Hill and Lester Arnold?
That's correct.
And Mr. Thomas, you will pick up Dupont and Sandville?
Yes.
Is everybody else okay with what they have? Sandville.
Sandville, I got both of the preschools.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to address the committee assignments as well?
Yes. So are we okay with everything else? You good with yours, Harvest?
Yes.
Ms. Quintana? Mr. Rola?
Yeah.
I'm good with mine. Mr. Hyde, you're good with those? Okay, let's do the committee assignments. So the vacant committee assignments are Adams 14 Foundation. Mr. Thomas is the alternate there. It's vacant right now. First of all, let me ask. Are the committee assignments, everybody has, are they, are they working out okay?
No, I'm fine.
You good with yours?
Yeah, yeah, the only thing is that it takes either, probably you, Tim, you know, the President should be part of the Rotary.
Well, you do a good job there, Mr. Rola.
No, no, no. So tomorrow you can show up and I'll introduce you.
We could flip-flop. Right now, Mr. Rola, you are assigned and, and President Archuleta is the alternate. We could flip those. That way, if, if Mr. Archuleta can't attend, you can go in his place since you're familiar.
Will you be the alternate?
No.
No? You don't care to be the alternate?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd be happy to volunteer for the Adams 14 Education Foundation and the City Council.
For the alternate, you mean?
Mr. Thomas has City Council now.
City, ah, oh, I see. Yes, okay, yes.
For the alternate?
Yes, that's right. Thanks for the correction. And if you want, I would be the alternate for the Rotary if, my understanding is that Mr. Rola prefers not to do that.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? So we have the area boards, which I take care of when we have the meetings, but we need an alternate there. Is anybody interested in being the alternate?
Point of information, what is the area boards?
So the area boards are the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, the Water Board, who else sits on, who else goes to those?
Fire Department?
The Fire, Fire District, yeah, the Water District, just the area boards in the...
Yeah, if you promise not to be absent too much, I'd, I'll do that.
They only meet like every three and four months.
Okay.
And then, let's see, we need an alternate for the Student Board of Education. Mr. Rola is the...
We don't have that already quite yet.
Okay.
So maybe we should look at getting that set up at the...
And then we have the Facility Review Committee. It meets a fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:00 PM at Adams City High School Community Room. Mr. Thomas is the alternate there.
And that's kind of non-existent right now.
So we don't need a...
Not yet.
I can put those two on hold.
Okay.
And who was on the area board, Mr. Dr. Hyde?
I'm on the area board as the alternate.
And is everybody else okay with the rest of their appointments? So under Communications, we have General Communications and Others. So, does anybody want to have any communications? I'd like to say thank you very much for, for the honor of being the President of the Board for this year. Thank you to Mr. Rola. He's been a great mentor to me. Think he does very good work. I know where his passion is. He'll continue doing what he does, so, thank you, Mr. Rola. And welcome, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm in Dr. Hyde, excuse me. Thank you, Connie. Harvest, I want to thank you for all of your keeping us all in check and making sure we do all of our stuff. It's a pleasure working with all of you. I look forward to it.
Likewise.
That's my communications. Thank you.
I, I have some communication. At our last board meeting, November the 14th, it's my understanding that every two weeks if somebody come up to the diocese, they are supposed to get a, if I'm not mistaken, a notice two weeks later. And I noticed that when the President of the Union gave the Board dates, CTA, of January 16th, February the 6th, and February the 20th, that wasn't discussed, or was it discussed in Dr. Brago's two weeks? Or was the status of, are we gonna make a consensus for the Board to meet with the CTA on one of those dates? You got that?
I have that, yes.
Oh, okay.
It'll be after I get the comments from everybody, we'll, we'll act on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's my communication.
Dr. J?
Well, I just want to say, as a token of appreciation, we have a small gift for our new Board members, so, Dr. Hyde, I'd like to present you with a small gift from our, from our district, and we want to thank you for your commitment to our students, our staff and our community, so thank you so much for serving our students.
Thank you very much, Superintendent.
And we also have a gift for Connie. We have one for you two, you were newly elected, so on the same note that we want to thank you for serving on the Board, your commitment to our children, to our teachers, to our communities, so thank you so much for helping us, and we wish you both a very successful four years.
Thank you.
Dr. Hyde, you had your hand up.
No, I, I'm all set, thank you.
You're good. So we have, as you, as you so graciously reminded us, that we have an action to talk about. So the CTA and the Board of Education, CTA's requesting a meeting with the Board of Education. The dates that were given to us were January 16th, February the 6th, or February the 20th. Are we interested in having a meeting with CTA? And if we are, what days would we like, what day would we like to do that on?
Soon as possible, 16th.
Can, can I set some parameters around our meeting with CTA? For the, for the simple fact that we act as a legislative body? And as a legislative body, we have to be careful with the information that we, we get from people about things because we may have to act on it legislatively.
But Board Policy states if we not using names and personnel, we can act and listen.
Correct.
And we can go in executive session, too.
Correct. Correct. I just want to make sure that we, make sure that we understand our obligation as a, as a legislative body. So I don't have a problem meeting with folks. I'll take notes and do whatever we need to do. So I'm okay with any of the dates, it's okay with me, so just thought I'd put that little caveat out there.
So... Do, do we have any ideas to the, the subject matter for the, that they want to bring before us?
We certainly could ask for an agenda before we say yes to the meeting.
I think we need, we need an agenda.
It may be, it may be just a, just a communication...
It's just, if it's just for open communication and to establish communication lines, I think that's wonderful. You know, if, if, if it's just to kind of understa, to, to air concerns, I think that seems all in the right direction in terms of trying to improve communications among all the players. I, I don't know at what point you get into the areas where we have to absent ourselves from certain conversations. So you're probably more familiar with that than I am.
Okay. So, I mean, we can, we can certainly request an agenda. Barb, would that be okay if we requested an agenda from you? And then, so, can we tentatively come to a date? Once we get the, the agenda item from, from Barb, then we can, we can settle that down?
Do you want me to come up there?
Yes, please.
So the purpose of meeting with Classroom Teachers Association leadership is to identify areas of, and, sorry, to identify areas of collaboration and shared interests in regards to improving student achievement.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask again for the dates that were offered?
January 16th, February the 6th, or February the 20th?
I'd be in favor of the earliest date as Director Thomas suggested.
January 16th?
Which is the 16th.
Anybody else?
January the 16th is what day?
It's a Thursday.
I have it as a Tuesday. This is January 16? That's a Tuesday, I believe.
It's a Monday.
What time are we talking about?
It's a Tuesday.
Is it the second Tuesday of the month?
Third Tuesday of the month.
Our meetings are usually at 4:30, but we're fairly flexible. It can't be before 4:15 because we have middle school representatives and they don't get out of school until 4:20. So 4:30 is actually the best.
Barb, how many are you planning?
There is roughly 20 leaders.
Okay, so we have January the 16th, 4:30 approximately, to talk about collaboration and sharing of ideas. Do I have a consensus from everybody? Or do you have a different date that we can discuss?
I'm, I'm good. 4:30, January 16.
Mr. Rola?
Yeah, it's good.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
I'm okay with it. Monica, will you send out a notification to all of, a reminder to all of us?
Yes.
And, Ms. McDowell, where will we have this meeting at?
We, the last time we had it, we had it in this room right here, but we can, I can get a room at the Rex Center. I'm pretty open. You tell me what works best for you guys.
I'm okay with here. But I want everybody to be able to, to feel comfortable and able to...
This is a neutral, I'm, everybody knows this place.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Mr. Rola?
Yeah.
Ms. Quintana? Will you see that that happens, Monica?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Are there any other communications? I'd like to recognize City Council for being here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight and being, participating in the students' best interests. Thank you very much. With that, I'd, I'd like a motion to adjourn?
President Archuleta?
Pardon me?
Yes, I just want to let Board President know that all our people in the audience that we are gonna have a little reception in the room next door for our newly appointed Board members to welcome them, so everyone is welcome to attend and partake in some appetizers. Might be dinner for you.
We should've said that before everybody left. With that, everybody's invited to the room next door to welcome Mrs. Quintana and Dr. Hyde
Yes.
Onto the Board again. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
I move that we motion to adjourn the meeting for tonight.
Any discussion? Have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's, uh... 8:21.